Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a special meeting. Like I think they're all special, but a special meeting of the Lower Mcfield Township Board of Supervisors. This being Monday, November 20th, 2023. I would ask that you all join with me and rise to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. John, are you here?
Uh, President.
James?
Present.
Dan?
Here.
Colin?
Present.
All right, there being five. Um, assuming we have no community announcements, we don't really have an agenda. Because we're really here just to talk about the budget. So with that, can I turn it over to you?
Yeah, I'd be happy to, Madam Chair. Um, so again, uh, just for benefit of the public, um, you know, the board is met in, in two sessions prior to this session uh, to critically review, uh, the, um, budget, uh, for 2024. Um, at this point, um, again, it would be customary that the, um, uh, depending on how this conversation goes, uh, the Board of Supervisors, uh, would adopt a preliminary budget, uh, and then make it available for, uh, public inspection. Uh, the statute requires, uh, 20 days, uh, of, uh, as a, as a public inspection, um, uh, period. Um, just to provide some sort of baseline on, on where we are, uh, the, um, 2024 general fund, uh, revenues uh, are totaling, uh, just over 16.4 million. Um, as we've talked about in prior sessions, that does include, uh, one-time transfers, uh, totaling about one and a half million dollars, uh, coming from, um, non-recurring revenue, uh, sources. Uh, so as the board is aware, uh, there are some sanitary sewer sale proceeds that are liquid, uh, roughly, uh, about 1.37 million. Uh, and then, uh, there's 140, uh, just shy of 141,000 remaining in American Rescue Plan Act dollars. Uh, that's proposed to be transferred into the general fund. Uh, general fund expenses, uh, including, uh, inter-fund operating transfers, uh, are equivalent to the revenues. Uh, so the, uh, budget is showing that, uh, current year revenues, um, are, um, meeting current, uh, current year expenses. Uh, again, with caveat that, uh, there are these one-time non-recurring transfers that, that are occurring in order to, to make that, that happen. Um, just from a, a millage rate perspective, uh, and again, I'm providing this just so that there's baseline understanding as you begin your discussion. Um, the general, uh, purpose tax, uh, which is currently at 13.88 mils, uh, is proposed in the draft to go to 14 mils, which is the statutory cap, uh, under the, uh, second-class township, uh, code. Uh, there's no proposed increase in the fire protection tax, uh, no proposed increase in the hydrant tax, no proposed increase in the park and recreation special purpose tax. Uh, there is a proposed change in the debt service, uh, tax. Uh, it's largely, uh, for presentation purposes. Um, it's proposed to go from 2.09 mils to 2.63 mils. And when I say presentation purposes, that's to, um, essentially have the levy, um, generate enough revenue to pay, uh, all debt service that, that the township has outstanding. Uh, no proposed increase in the ambulance, uh, tax. Um, no proposed, uh, increase in the road machinery tax. Uh, and then the budget, as was talked about at the last session, uh, does incorporate, uh, a roadway improvement, uh, tax, which is a special purpose tax that's permitted under the second-class township code, uh, of two mils, um, currently. Um, so the, uh, proposal in terms of just overall millage rate, uh, at this point, from a draft standpoint, uh, takes it from 20.51 mils to 23.17 mils, uh, which is an increase of 2.66, uh, mils. Um, just to put that in, uh, perspective, um, based on an average assessed residential value in Lower Mcfield Township of 43.6, uh, that's about 115, almost 116, uh, dollars annually, uh, more to the average, uh, township taxpayer. Um, that would bring the average, uh, township tax bill to just over a thousand dollars a year, uh, when factoring in both the general purpose and the, uh, special purpose, uh, taxes. Uh, and again, just to, uh, provide some context, because I know, uh, obviously folks are paying taxes well in excess of, of that amount that I just referenced. Um, just to give perspective, the percentage distribution of tax payments or levy by taxing jurisdictions, um, based on the proposed tax rate and not factoring in any, uh, potential increase by the county, uh, or by the school district, um, would be, uh, about, uh, nine cents, just shy of 10 cents of every dollar of tax is paid to the township. About 11 cents is paid to the county and, and almost 80 cents is paid to the, uh, school district, uh, out of, out of every dollar. Uh, the draft does, uh, propose an increase in the leaf assessment fee. Um, again, we're one of the, I think we're the only municipality, uh, in the immediate area that does, uh, curbside leaf collection. Uh, currently, the fee is at $70 annually. It's proposed to go up to $90 annually. Uh, that has not been adjusted since, um, 2016, which was affected, uh, effective in 2017. Uh, and the current assessment is insufficient to cover all the costs associated with, uh, with collection. Um, the draft, uh, just, uh, again, for transparency and discussion, does incorporate, uh, a 3% wage increase for non-bargaining unit, non-uniform employees. Uh, the CPI during that period was about 3.2%, so that, that increase is less than, uh, inflation. Uh, and then incorporates, um, the four and a quarter percent for police personnel consistent with collective bargaining agreement. Um, the current draft removes the hiring. There was some discussion about a replacement, uh, police officer. Um, this was to, uh, backfill for retirement. Um, uh, the current draft removes the hiring of a new police officer. Uh, there was also a discussion of hiring an additional public works laborer. Uh, that is also removed in, in the current draft. Um, and then I've provided the board with, uh, a listing of, of capital projects. Uh, again, not using general fund revenues, but using, uh, revenues, uh, two primary sources, park and rec fee in lieu of, which is restricted, uh, uh, monies, uh, to be used for, uh, maintenance, uh, and, um, development purposes in the park and recreational realm. Uh, and then, uh, there's a series of stormwater, uh, related and pollution reduction plan-related, uh, projects that are being proposed to be funded through remaining debt proceeds, uh, from the 2016, um, bond proceeds. So I, I know that was a lot. I, I, I know it was all verbal, um, but, um, that's sort of a baseline, just as you're sort of talking about, um, uh, you know, the budgets and, and looking at, you know, opportunities for, um, um, you know, savings or whatever it may be, and, and also to provide you some context as you're posing questions.
Where'd Dave go? Where'd Dave go?
He left, he left.
Okay, well, I think it's important to say that we had an executive session. I'm sure that he'll report that at the next meeting. Um, do we need a motion before we have some conversation? Or do people want to have some conversation and then make a motion?
I can easily make a motion to adopt the drafted agenda as developed by the township manager and staff, uh, in its current form.
And you meant budget when you said agenda?
Huh?
Budget?
Yeah.
Said agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Motion made by John and seconded by Colin.
So if there's discussion now, we can always amend the motion and then continue with the discussion.
Okay, so would you like, as the motion maker, would you like to lead off the discussion?
I'm flexible. I don't have to, but I can if you like. So, uh, a couple of things in general, no one likes to raise taxes. And I know the very first time I raised property taxes, I was physically ill. Um, however, property taxes are, do not adjust for inflation. And we've chosen a path in Lower Mcfield where we predominantly use, uh, property taxes. We have a, a challenge as it relates to the general fund cap, um, the second-class township codes face, uh, in terms of how much we can have in millage. I think the road millage that we created, uh, with the two-mil levy, which is the majority of the, the total millage, is important because it means we can now start to invest in roads, not necessarily today, but down the road at, at higher levels. Um, so I'm supportive of increasing the, uh, the millage. Um, I would have increased it higher and open to that discussion, whether it's, uh, the roadway improvement mills or other ways that increase property taxes. I don't have a problem with that. I'm open to that. I remain opposed to an earned income tax, as many folks know. Um, I'm pleased that we've made some significant reductions in proposed expenditures between where we're at. Um, I think I can probably only speak for myself, but this year's budget process, while not fun, and they never are fun, uh, is, uh, a better process than we've had in many years. We've had an open dialogue on a number of issues. I think my fellow supervisors would agree that we've gotten to issues that we hadn't previously talked about. Um, and that's been instructive for both the board and the community. So, uh, we're not happy to raise taxes and, you know, obviously we have to do that here. Uh, we are moving forward in very constructive ways. So that's my general comments on it. Um, I'm open to discussing some of the individual ones, but I don't want to take up too much time.
So I'm, uh, fine just to go down the road, uh, but if you want me to look.
Thank you, yeah. Um, you know, similar to John's comments, um, my biggest, uh, concern with this budget was taking sanitary, uh, sanitary sale, uh, sale proceeds and, uh, and using that for operational costs. Clearly, we've been over this. I think all of you had heard it at.
Just for benefit of the public, you know, the board is met in two sessions prior to this session to critically review the budget for 2024. At this point, again, it would be customary that the, depending on how this conversation goes, the Board of Supervisors would adopt a preliminary budget and then make it available for public inspection. The statute requires 20 days of, as a, as a public inspection period. Just to provide some sort of baseline on, on where we are, the 2024 general fund revenues are totaling just over 16.4 million. As we've talked about in prior sessions, that does include one-time transfers totaling about one and a half million dollars coming from non-recurring revenue sources. So as the board is aware, there are some sanitary sewer sale proceeds that are liquid, roughly about 1.37 million. And then there's 140, just shy of 141,000 remaining in American Rescue Plan Act dollars that's proposed to be transferred into the general fund. A general fund expenses, including inter-fund operating transfers, are equivalent to the revenues. So the budget is showing that current year revenues are meeting current, current year expenses, again with caveat that there are these one-time non-recurring transfers that, that are occurring in order to, to make that, that happen. Just from a millage rate perspective, and again, I'm providing this just so that there's baseline understanding as you begin your discussion, the general purpose tax, which is currently at 13.88 mils, is proposed in the draft to go to 14 mils, which is the statutory cap under the second-class township code. There's no proposed increase in the fire protection tax, no proposed increase in the hydrant tax, no proposed increase in the park and recreation special purpose tax. There is a proposed change in the debt service tax. It's largely for presentation purposes. It's proposed to go from 2.09 mils to 2.63 mils. And when I say presentation purposes, that's to essentially have the levy generate enough revenue to pay all debt service that, that the township has outstanding. No proposed increase in the ambulance tax, no proposed increase in the road machinery tax. And then the budget, as was talked about at the last session, does incorporate a roadway improvement tax, which is a special purpose tax that's permitted under the second-class township code of two mils currently. So the proposal in terms of just overall millage rate at this point, from a draft standpoint, takes it from 20.51 mils to 23.17 mils, which is an increase of 2.66 mils. Just to put that in perspective, based on an average assessed residential value in Lower Makefield Township of 43.6, that's about 115, almost 116 dollars annually more to the average township taxpayer. That would bring the average township tax bill to just over $1,000 a year when factoring in both the general purpose and the special purpose taxes. And again, just to provide some context, because I know obviously folks are paying taxes well in excess of, of that amount that I just referenced, just to give perspective, the percentage distribution of tax payments or levy by taxing jurisdictions based on the proposed tax rate and not factoring in any potential increase by the county or by the school district would be about nine cents, just shy of 10 cents of every dollar of tax is paid to the township. About 11 cents is paid to the county and, and almost 80 cents is paid to the school district out of, out of every dollar. The draft does propose an increase in the leaf assessment fee. Again, we're one of the, I think we're the only municipality in the immediate area that does curbside leaf collection. Currently, the fee is at $70 annually. It's proposed to go up to $90 annually. That has not been adjusted since 2016, which was affected, effective in 2017. And the current assessment is insufficient to cover all the costs associated with, with collection. The draft, just again, for transparency and discussion, does incorporate a 3% wage increase for non-bargaining unit, non-uniform employees. The CPI during that period was about 3.2%, so that, that increase is less than inflation and then incorporates the 4 and 1/4% for police personnel consistent with collective bargaining agreement. The current draft removes the hiring. There was some discussion about a replacement police officer. This was to backfill for retirement. The current draft removes the hiring of a new police officer. There was also a discussion of hiring an additional public works labor. That is also removed in, in the current draft. And then I've provided the board with a listing of, of capital projects. Again, not using general fund revenues, but using revenues, two primary sources, park and rec fee in lieu of, which is restricted monies to be used for maintenance and development purposes in the park and recreational realm. And then there's a series of stormwater-related and pollution reduction plan-related projects that are being proposed to be funded through remaining debt proceeds from the 2016 bond proceeds. So I, I know that was a lot. I, I know it was all verbal, but that's sort of a baseline, just as you're sort of talking about, you know, the budgets and, and looking at, you know, opportunities for, you know, savings or whatever it may be, and, and also to provide you some context as you're posing questions.
Where'd Dave go? Where'd Dave go?
He left, he left.
Okay. Well, I think it's important to say that we had an executive session. I'm sure that he'll report that at the next meeting. Do we need a motion before we have some conversation? Or do people want to have some conversation and then make a motion?
I can easily make a motion to adopt the drafted agenda as developed by the township manager and staff in its current form.
And you meant budget when you said agenda?
Huh?
Budget?
Yeah.
Said agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Motion made by John and seconded by Colin.
So if there's discussion now, we can always amend the motion and then continue with the discussion.
Okay. So would you like, as the motion maker, would you like to lead off the discussion?
I'm flexible. I don't have to, but I can if you like. So a couple of things in general, no one likes to raise taxes. And I know the very first time I raised property taxes, I was physically ill. However, property taxes are, do not adjust for inflation. And we've chosen a path in Lower Makefield where we predominantly use property taxes. We have a, a challenge as it relates to the general fund cap, the second-class township codes face in terms of how much we can have in millage. I think the road millage that we created with the two-mil levy, which is the majority of the, the total millage, is important because it means we can now start to invest in roads, not necessarily today, but down the road at, at higher levels. So I'm supportive of increasing the, the millage. I would have increased it higher and open to that discussion, whether it's the roadway improvement mills or other ways that increase property taxes. I don't have a problem with that. I'm open to that. I remain opposed to an earned income tax, as many folks know. I'm pleased that we've made some significant reductions in proposed expenditures between where we're at. I think I can probably only speak for myself, but this year's budget process, while not fun, and they never are fun, is a better process than we've had in many years. We've had an open dialogue on a number of issues. I think my fellow supervisors would agree that we've gotten to issues that we hadn't previously talked about. And that's been instructive for both the board and the community. So while we're not happy to raise taxes, and it, you know, obviously we have to do that here, we are moving forward in very constructive ways. So that's my general comments on it. I'm open to discussing some of the individual ones, but I don't want to take up too much time.
So I'm fine just to go down the road, but if you want me to look?
Thank you. Yeah. Um, you know, similar to John's comments, my biggest concern with this budget was taking sanitary, sanitary sale, sale proceeds and, and using that for operational costs. Clearly, we've been over this. I think all of you had heard it at an museum at this point. So anything we could do to kind of avoid that, from a structural standpoint, you can't keep doing that, right? So we're going to get to a point at some point where we run out of savings and we can't use that for operations. So I think we've all made an effort to try to make operations as lean as possible at this point. You know, I'd, I'd speak for everybody on the board. We didn't create this, right? We were given this task. This has been created over years and years of, of however the township was operating. And now we're in a situation where we kind of have to either draw a line in the sand and fix it, or continue to kind of kick the can down the road. And unfortunately, or fortunately for taxpayers, I think we're doing our best. So I think there's still a couple of small details that we can iron out, but overall we're close.
Okay. So if I make that rule, I'll, I'll stick to it. It is, it is a difficult time, right? As, as we all have grown and learned about where we are and how we got here. I think what Dave said in all those words was really important because people talk to us all the time about, you know, how much they pay in taxes and, and it's a true statement. But unfortunately, of that true statement, only 10 cents roughly less than of your dollar in taxes comes to us. And with that 10 cents, we have to pave roads, pay police, ensure that we have fire safety, pick up leaves, recycle, trash, whatever we're going to call that thing that happens in the back here, pay for all of our staff. And, you know, there's only so many miracles that people can perform. It's, it's not easy to talk about taxes. Certainly, we have a lot of people in the community who are on, well, I'll say fixed income, and I'm not sure that mills is the way to solve the issue. Certainly, if, if I was taking a course in government and I was asked to set up a structure for how you would fund a local government, or even how you'd manage a local government, I probably would not reproduce what we have here in Lower Makefield. But as a second-class township, we are, we are bound within those constraints. So I will have more to say about the budget once I let other people have a chance to talk. I, I do think it's a difficult time. Go up, Dan.
Yeah, ditto, I guess, across the board, right? One of the things we're looking at, you know, short-term versus long-term is long-term budget planning, sustainable budget planning, sustainable infrastructure. One of the things the township achieved this year was a certification through Sustainable PA, meaning we've met certain criteria to be considered a sustainable township. That's not, a lot of times when we talk about sustainability, that's, that's environmental or green stuff. In this case, this program is not just sustainability from an environmental perspective. It's sustainability from an overall infrastructure budget and just processes and procedures. And what does it take to be a sustainable township across the board in everything that we do? So that, I think the, the board is, is of the mindset that when we get into the budget this year, we've had some pretty direct conversations about how do we need to structure the budget, not only this year, but for future years? And how can we plan for the next two, five, you know, where I just got reelected to that six years, right? To have a six-year plan for the budget is really what we're doing. I know. No, that's a good thing. I'm looking forward to it. But at the same time, that's the thing. We have to come up with that six-year plan, that five-year plan, working with our, with our township manager and our staff. And we're, you know, so we're, we've been asking a lot of tough questions about how we can do that the best way. Different ideas have been thrown out. You know, so, and I, that's the 30,000-foot level. When we get into some of the, some of the items we, we've talked about over the last several weeks, we're going to talk about some more tonight, I assume, you know, we're, we're at, we're, we're considering the addition of a finance director, something that hasn't been implemented in the township very well, maybe ever, right? Because we are so, so concerned about the future budgets and the structure of the budgets and having someone that can keenly focus on finance issues with a support staff to, to implement these ideas. That means everything else can hopefully, in theory, flow that more, much more smoothly without a huge cost increase from a staffing perspective, and they can find efficiencies to reduce costs other places. That's key. When we look at projects that are in the budget, you know, and how we're paying for those, it's, it's no, it's no secret this year that we've had some major issues when it comes to infrastructure. July 15th, we all remember what happened there and then exposed a lot of, a lot of items that we have to address as a township that may, maybe we should have done a little bit sooner. But now we are absolutely doing it now in this budget. Are there potentially ways to do a little bit better? Maybe. I'm certainly open to those ideas. A lot of that is not being paid through new millages. It's, it's being paid through existing bond proceeds that haven't been from 2016 that haven't been spent yet. So we, we are paying down bond proceeds by implementing these very important infrastructure projects, whether it's, you know, new stormwater, stream restoration projects, et cetera, that are part of improving our overall township infrastructure. We are, we're also looking at a new millage specific to roadway improvements that can be used not just for putting pavement down, but for improving stormwater pipes and, and inlets and other things of part of our infrastructure that is so important. And not only will it help us do projects in the short term, it helps us build up that, you know, that rain, not a rainy day fund, that's a poor term to use when we're talking about stormwater, but I didn't even mean that as joke, I swear. It just, it just keeps coming out. No, but it, it allows us to, to build up those funds for future projects by assessing that millage now. And that's, can only be used for those important infrastructure projects, which is key for me that we don't just put it in the general fund. We put it in a fund that can only be used for certain items specific to infrastructure. There's some other projects in there that we can get into that maybe there's other ways, not necessarily fund them, but to redirect those funds towards other infrastructure projects rather than some nice, what I'll call nice to haves, from my own perspective. Others may see it differently. And then I think as we do that, you know, a lot of these, some of these projects that we're spending money on, they're, they're fairly big-ticket items, but we've applied for grants for nearly all of them. And this budget doesn't consider that we may get several grants into the tune of several hundred thousand dollars. Mr. Kratzner and I met with the DCED this week to talk about potential future funding sources for various projects and activities that could help fund some of this stuff in the future. So I think we're looking towards the future in, in ways to fund things in the future that are creative so that the burden isn't completely on all of us as taxpayers.
Thank you. There are four people in the room tonight and eight people on YouTube. I'm not sure how many are on Facebook, but there's about a dozen people in this township of, what, 35,000 residents? While we're here talking about a $1.5 million structural deficit in the budget. And that's, I mean, I would have been one of those people who wasn't in this meeting and paying attention to it if I weren't on this board. So what, you know, we started this budget process with a $3 million structural deficit, and I think some amazing work has been done across the members of the board, the various department heads across the township in really evaluating what's necessary, what the town has to do and provide for moving forward. I know that, that folks have come to meetings and they talk about, I don't like this project. I don't like that project. But, you know, looking at it, we are, we're really at a point where we're, we're covering the basics of what we have to do for the town, right? Which is to get potholes out of roads, right? To keep the roads clear, to keep the community safe and things like that. And I think that that's what this budget today really represents, is what we have to do for this township to fulfill the obligations as the government of the township. What I'd like to invite the 12 residents who are observing and, and being a part of to do is to talk to your neighbors over the next year, because there's going to be a really big budget process again next year and real big questions to answer and talk about, about what the town sees as vital as the minimum of what the township has to do. So that's my goal tonight is to get to a budget. I think that Mr. Kratzner and team working with the board has prepared a very sensible budget that really hits at what we have to do. I will point out, because I was naive until learning through this process, you know, if we look, Mr. Kratzner has given us a list of millions of dollars of projects that the township is going to do this year. It is important to point out, as someone previously mentioned, that's not from the general operating fund. That's not from the tax dollars that everyone is paying on a monthly basis through their mortgages or through other, through other venues. These are monies that can only be used for these types of projects. These are not things that cutting them is going to help us reduce the burden on the taxpayer or the township in any real way. So anyway, listen, I'm, I'm happy to be a second on this. I think some great work has gone into this budget. I don't envy this board for the work that they have to do over the next 12 months for the next budget. And I would just ask that we all, as citizens of Lower Makefield, get more involved, be here more presently and stop worrying about what happened last week and worry about how we're going to sustain this township for the next 20 to 30 years. Thank you.
Maker of the motion, consider, consider a friendly amendment to return the general fund millage to 13.88 from 14.
And that's a $60,000 change?
Yeah, that, that would be about a $65,000 reduction in revenue. But, but again, as I think we've talked about, you know, that, that hopefully can be managed throughout the year, both through managing expense and then, you know, the opportunity for perhaps revenues to be in excess of, of what's projected based on what is known today. So, you know, within the grand scheme of things, that reduction doesn't really have any material impact in, in terms of the, 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 the overall sort of structure of the budget. So.
Given the de minimis nature of that, I'd be okay with that. It would also require Colin as the second or to be also cool with that. I'm going to write down any edits to the motion just so that when we get the final, we're good. So yeah, that, that I could be, I, I would be okay with. And for those who are wondering at home, why make such a small change? There's a cap, the state law requires at 14 mils for the general fund. And there's a couple of ways to approach how to resolve that. One method is that the township or the county of Bucks County has not reassessed homes since 1972. So the assessment's based on very old values of homes. In 2003, the county did a countywide adjustment, not a reassessment, that would restructure the amount that, that the assessed value of houses would be. And therefore, everybody was brought their millages down commensurately. If that were to happen again, we would be out from under that. Or we have an option of raising an additional five mils by going to district or municipal Commonwealth Court, which is also an option. And one other municipalities in Bucks County do as well. So, but just to give more context on that. Also too, last time we spoke, remember we're the sixth lowest municipal taxes in Bucks County. So of our peers, we're one of the lowest.
I'll support the amendment to the motion.
Any public comment on the amendment? I should have asked the board first, any public comment, any board comment on the amendment?
Were there some additional things that we just discussed that?
We're going to have to do an amendment by, I'm going to do that amendment?
By one.
And then I'm going to have one that has a few things in it, but to keep it clear.
So now the motion has a 13.88 mil general fund?
Correct.
With that, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the amendment? I did do public comment. I'll do it again. Public comment?
On the phone? Would you be, if it's a friendly amendment, I've accepted it. It's part of the motion. So your vote would be the entire motion?
Oh, I apologize then. Thank you for that.
Yeah.
Hold, hold the voting. Hold the voting. Then John, I, I would ask you to consider another friendly amendment. I would like to make it clear that the new budget considers no new hires except for finance director with the consideration that if revenues come in greater than expected in 2024, that there would be consideration given to additional public work employee.
I can accept that. I was also going to say, and again, for those wondering, if our revenues come in at a higher rate than we anticipate at this time, there, we could be in a position where we could hire additional staff. We are understaffed in a couple of areas. Supervisor Bundy, or pardon me, Chair brings up that we are understaffed in public works and we are through a transition process. I would be supportive of that. At the same time, I'd also like us to, and again, this is non-binding element. I'd also like us to consider an additional police officer to bring us up to full complement. And we would know that six months from now. Is that okay with the, and a request or that we could look at this six months from now for both positions?
Sure.
Is that okay with you, Colin?
Sure.
Okay. So then that friendly amendment would be that the board will consider in the second quarter of 2024, an additional staff person for public works and a restoration of a, a staff person in the police department if revenues meet a certain level. Is that, that's, that's, yeah. Everybody comfortable with that? Okay.
Is there any comment by the board? Mike, on, you're not so close to it.
Yeah, I'll bring it. I always, someone's going to yell at me from there, from YouTube. No, I think it's important, as I already talked about the importance of a finance director, and I agree with making the hard decision about no new hires at this point. However, in a, outside of the finance director, that being said, we know that we want to hire a few new staff, key staff in public works and, and police, such that if revenues do allow for it, I think we're all in favor of it. So this is one of those tough decisions that we're making at this point, but we want to be flexible in, in case there's a more positive light coming up.
Yeah. And the reason why the Chair brought this and we're adding it into is, once the budget's passed, for us to add additional staff, we would have to have a resolution here to allow us to do that, to give us that flexibility. That was the advice we received from the township solicitor in executive session, that should we want to do that next year, we would need to make that resolution now.
Any public comment on the amendment?
Just, just for purposes of discussion and, and also just clarity. So the, the budget currently, for example, there, there's also an individual in the park and rec department that has, is, as you know, is leaving. And so their, their right now is resource in the park and rec operating fund to replace that person. I just want to make sure I'm understanding what, what the board's direction is related to that, that issue. And we can have that discussion later. Again, that's not addressing the general fund issue. We, we can bring that back to you at, at a later date. It, I just want to let you know it's, there, there is, there are dollars that are in the, in the park and rec operating account for the replacement of that individual. So whatever the.
And, and I believe the intent of saying no new hires is to say no net change. Is that, is that correct?
I'll, I'll accept that.
So generally permissive of backfills?
So essentially, our, our park and rec millage is at 2.43. It wouldn't increase.
It's not increasing in any fashion.
If anything, if, if, if we went with the plan of not hiring, it would decrease.
Correct.
Does it keep it at what we're at?
The difficulty there is, is that if, if there's insufficient staff to run programs, then the revenue could also have a corresponding reduction as well.
And the reason why we're specifically speaking of public works and police are, they are related to the general fund, which is where we experience the most.
Correct. The, the other, the other distinction is that they're, they're Correct. The, the other, the other distinction is that there, there currently is not funds being out, there's, there's not funds in this draft budget, as I mentioned, for either the addition of a new public works employee or the backfilling of that police officer as, as it currently stands.
Also, and I, I don't, Chair, Madam Chair, if this is out of order, just for the record, this current one has the removal of community day in it or no?
It does not. No. So that, that again, you, you can.
Oh.
I, I should have done community day, but I missed it even though it was at the top of the list. So I'll do that next after we get public comment.
Madam Chair, do you want me to address the board first, or do you want to have public comment first?
Public comment.
The Raines Stoddard 220 Meadow Drive. I don't understand half of what you're talking about for, from one sense, just because I don't know the real rules. But you said, John, that if we have, if our monies come in at a certain level, quote unquote, then we could potentially hire a police officer in public works. Sounds great. Math being as it is, it's very black and white. Why would you be questioning the certain level? Is that because people don't pay taxes?
There's a couple of reasons why revenue can be variable in municipalities. One of them is we rely on the real estate transfer tax. And we also rely on real estate taxes when things get reused in different ways. So for example, if someone sells a large parcel of property, they pay a real estate transfer tax. Those transactions are rather lumpy. And we went through a period where we had a number of them, we were doing above what we were budgeting consistently. Then interest rates spiked, right? And then the number of transactions declined. But that can spike again, and particularly if we have certain things come online, we may have those revenues there.
Good. I was just curious, sorry.
Did you want to say something?
Uh, yes. First of all, I appreciate John keeping that replacement officer on the radar. However, obviously reducing staffing of police officers and reducing public safety is a big concern of mine. And I'd like to know what you believe that an officer, and as I said to Dan's question in the budget talks, he asked me, when would we realize any type of expense for the officer? And I said, probably not till the third quarter of the year. What you think that that's really going to do to help the bottom line of the budget? And do you know how much that would be in 2024?
Yeah, I think you, you're more better able to answer the questions specifically than me, but yeah.
Yeah. So again, if we contemplate the hiring of an officer essentially during, you're, you're just, you're talking in fourth quarter.
Fourth quarter of fiscal year 2024.
Okay. So just looking at the contracts, where's that?
Well, my, well, while he's looking, my figures are that it should be around $25,000 savings. Twenty-four, not to hire a police, to hire a police officer. And if you don't, you're saving $25,000. If you take that police officer and you average out his salary with the next step raise that he would be entitled to would be total of 99,000 in 2025. And that's what the cost of reducing public safety and reducing a police officer would do for you and your budget. You just talked about the millage and you just talked about the reduction of the millage, which I'm glad to see you're able to do. But that's $130,000. Sixty-five and sixty-five over, over that period of time. And with the growth in the township, the excessive calls for police with the idea and knowledge now that Shady Brook is now going to develop. I think that reducing public safety at that point is really not a good idea to do. And I wanted an explanation of the savings so that the police officers listening could understand why you would not replace an officer and the public would know why there would be a reduction in public safety. Now, and another question, if you would answer that, I would appreciate it. But another question is, is this going to be the posture of the board now, all of a sudden, after all these years, to not replace police officers as they retire? Because as I said also in the budget talks, there's probably going to be two more officers to retire. An additional saving. So are we not going to replace them also?
Time frame on the two, on those two officers?
One, 2025 and possibly another one in 2024. He hasn't submitted his, his notice yet, but we, we expect it to be coming shortly.
So I'll, I'll take the first stab at it, Chief, but apparently I, I probably shouldn't because I don't think I clearly didn't satisfy you with my, my motion. To your point, the way it was phrased for the budget, the hire wouldn't be to the third quarter. We are operating at a huge deficit. And if you look at our mills, our mills equate, meaning the 14 that we just talked about, that essentially equates to the police budget, which we all agree is really important. And yet other things are important. So the hope is that those other revenues that John just talked about do materialize and then we're exactly where you wanted to be and where we think we should be. But the reality is right now, this is a really tough situation that we're in. So, you know, I don't think there's any change. Anybody on the board, at least if there is, they haven't told, shared it with me. But we are just trying to come up with a way that we don't totally erode our savings account, for lack of a better expression, that, you know, in 2018, there was nothing. Now we have something and we don't want to revisit that experience again. So I, I hope that makes sense.
It, it does. It does. And I understand the position of the board and I do understand the fiscal position of the township. I've been here during those times. I understand what happened. I understand what happened the previous four years before our new manager came and understand the situation we're in now. We also, we also have other means of revenue that haven't been discussed tonight that are hard decisions to make because they impact our residents and but I think that they need to make that decision when we're talking about public safety issues as to whether or not you want to go to a 14 mil and regain that extra money, whether you want an EIT, whether you want to tap into the interest on the money that the sewer sale proceeds and put that back into general fund, which you can do with a super vote of the board. And I think these are things that you need to consider before you even contemplate cuts in a budget, especially cuts in public service and public works. Which your main function is public safety and roads. And all these other things are very nice to have and we've had them over the years. But if we're facing a bad situation financially, then we have to bite the bullet and we have to do something. And if we're, if we're not ready to do it in 24, you're certainly going to be ready to do it in 25. So why don't we address it now? And why don't we stop with the reduction of services and the reduction of safety when there are means for the board to gather that revenue to keep this township moving in the right direction?
I do note that in 2024, one of our interest payments is going to roll off. So there'll be additional funds there. In 2025, I believe that's the first year we'll get some of the interest from the structured trust that we created. Sadly, I hate to even say this, but because of the sale of the Tobert Farm, we know there's going to be more houses that will buy by just the nature of that construction is going to bring in additional revenue. Not a lot, 10 cents on the dollar. And certainly not something, if I was given a choice, that I would have gone for, but I do think just with the passage of time, I know that we'll be in a slightly better position. But to your point, Chief, there are tough discussions that, you know, I was like shaking in my seat as Colin was calling people to, you know, engage. But yeah, we have to have a conversation about what new taxes look like or what earned income tax means for our ability to raise different source of revenue and possibly reduce real estate taxes. There's a lot of conversations that have to be had. Go ahead, John.
No, I'm fine.
Sorry, I thought you turned it on. Go ahead.
So Chief, you kind of sound like me over the last couple of years. In terms of, you know, so I appreciate what you're saying. I think the way, the way I think about it is kind of what Chair Blondie was just saying, there are going to be new revenue sources in the very near future that are going to come online, whether it's, you know, we don't like seeing them developed, but there are properties that will produce a fair amount of tax revenue in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, probably. There's going to be interest from the, you know, and I've looked at this a couple of different ways, but just the basic approach on the, the super fund, the trust, that's going to start kicking back several hundred thousand dollars a year. Hopefully the golf course will be what was promised or anticipated to the, in the next year or so, such that we get more grants and everything else and we have savings and other things and whatnot that we get additional revenues that can support fundamental, I, I, you know, you hear me talk about infrastructure, but people are infrastructure too, right? So I, I think my feel from the board, and anyone can tell me I'm wrong, is we're, we're trying to tap the break a little bit this year in anticipation of getting new revenue sources over the next couple of years that can, as we address the current structure of the budget compared to previous years, that we can then move back and get that extra police officer, replace those. After nothing, when police officers retire, we, we end up hiring more junior police officers at a lower rate. So that's all stuff that we need to look at and consider so that we can then come up with a two, three, four, five year plan to do just that, what you're talking about and see where there may be other ways to save on, you know, working with you to see other ways we can save within the police budget on whatever it may be. So, so that we can be fully, fully staffed as, as, as you see it and do all that stuff.
And I appreciate that. And I appreciate the thought and your words that went into that. And I know your intentions are well. However, that's an uncertainty. And when you're dealing with public safety, you can't deal in uncertainties. You can't, you can't, you can't bring morale up in the department. You can't alienate employees and you can't take the risk that something's going to happen in a township or to an officer and he's not going to have that backup. It's just, it's not something that you could risk. And it will cost this township a whole lot more if there was to be a tragedy, not only financially, but reputation wise to this board and to me. And that's why I'm so adamant about this. Obviously you'd say, well, it's one position. Why are you so upset about one position? Because it took many years to get here. So we had adequate staff on each shift and officers had backup and people can respond to medical emergencies. When you talk about a police officer, you talk about first responder. They're the true first responder. Not to, not to discredit any other, any other responder, rescue squad, fire, but police are on the scene first on almost everything. And if you don't have those people on the scene, you wouldn't want me to have to say the next day why an officer wasn't there at your house or your family. And I don't want to say that to a resident. And that's why I think the resident should know before you vote on a draft budget or you vote to advertise a budget that doesn't have a replacement for an officer that, and knowing that there's going to be more officers retiring that I said shortly. I think they need to know that. And let the, let the residents make the decision on whether a couple of hours more in a year in taxes is worth that. So if I have to try to make that argument for you or for this board, I will. And as far as the people who are on Facebook and listening at home and the few people that are here tonight, I hope that a lot more people are listening and there's a lot more people that voice their opinion in opposition to that posture.
I would say all we're saying here is that we're not enshrining it in the budget and we're going to be looking at beginning of next year. So essentially all we're saying is we haven't guaranteed the backfill immediately. Right? I think that's a reasonable posture. I don't know that we need to be put on blast mode for a decision to potentially delay something a quarter. And quite frankly, you know, there's a lot of discussion we, we should be having in terms of, and, and you know, Chief, and you know, my voting record, I'm, I've been always the one to make sure that we've had the sufficient number of police officers. I've always looked at where the metrics are per thousand. I want to support the increase in officers. We're at a higher level than we were years ago. So before I came here, we had what, three fewer officers, two or three fewer?
Probably more than that.
Yeah. And so we've had a significant increase in officers. And I will say that has yielded benefits, right? I'm not opposed to that. And also I believe I said at the beginning, you're talking to a guy who felt ill the first time. I have no problem with raising property taxes to get where we need. Right? So if you're that concerned about this particular thing, I would say then you need to figure out how, and instead of putting us on blast mode for this, wait a second, wait a second, what are those folks in Harrisburg doing for us here? Putting a 14 mil cap on us? Or, or what are the folks in the county in, in Doylestown say, hey, you need to get us a way out of this? Or when it comes time to making a decision to say, I want the extra five mills, you need to be there to say, hey, you know what? We need it for public safety reasons. No ifs, ands or buts, right? We get to have a choice here. We were the ones elected. We're ultimately responsible for this. I don't want an earned income tax, right? Others don't want an earned income tax. That doesn't mean we can't raise the taxes we have. It's that we have this one small gap that we have an issue with and unfortunately covers the police department, police function. So I would say, I guess you'll be coming with us to Doylestown to talk to the commissioners then?
I'll be coming with you at any time I need to come with you. And I will say that to the public that you have been supportive. That's why I'm very surprised is why you're not supportive now of this.
I, I added in.
You know.
Both. Yes.
Yes. And as far as me going, as far as me, I'm not a board member. I'm not a voting member.
Right.
You guys are, okay? And I wasn't up this position to make the decisions that you people had to make over the years, not to be in this position right now. So that, that's my position to say that I could, I could have done something about it is really not right to say. Although all I can do is advocate and all I can do is go to the public and explain to the public the repercussions of a less, less police officers and less public safety in our town, especially with the growth in our town.
So I, I do appreciate Chief, what you're saying, but I, just so we can reset, what the board, the amendment have put forth is that the officer that is under contemplation for being filled, she, you had requested that she not be hired until the third quarter. We are putting a hold on that until we see how the budget comes in. So it's not as of January 1 that we're going to be down anybody. It's that the new officer, she or he may be delayed in hiring, may not, hopefully not. We anticipate not. But that is where we are for right now. And if there's no more comment from the board, you have been very eloquent. Are you raising your hand?
Yeah.
Then go ahead, please.
Chief, you're, you're looking for $25,000.
Yes.
You have a request for $25,000 for license plate readers.
Yes.
I think the board is asking, trust the board, we'll give you the $25,000. It's going to happen midway through the year. We assume there's going to be some more money to come in. As an alternate, would you trust the board to potentially find a different funding avenue for the LPR and shift the 25,000 from the LPR request to the staffing request?
That would be excellent.
How does the rest of the board feel about that?
The staffing request represents an incurring annual expense, correct? Not a one-time 25,000.
Yeah, but that's going to be either way if you want to keep the same force.
Yeah.
And, and to the chief's point, with the development happening in the township, I don't see a way that you're not going to need even more than the current contingent of officers within a three-year period. But I'm only here for 41 more days. So let's, let's talk about the next 41 days.
Who's counting? Yeah.
I'm not excited about that.
Was that offered as a friendly amendment to, 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 to me, the maker of the motion?
Yes. Would you entertain a friendly amendment to the motion to shift the $25,000 in LPR funding to staffing funding to allow the chief to make that hire guaranteed in fourth?
At the end of the year, towards the end of the year.
I, I don't want to guarantee anything. I think we, we can't carry an additional expense going into the next year. I think the way that we're looking at it right now, the general fund represents $7.7 million per year. The police are currently taking up seven million and in three years are going to be taking 7.8 million, which puts us over the 14 already. I don't know how you operate.
It's not unusual. Anywhere you look in any budget in any township, that's not unusual.
Yeah. I, I mean, I, I don't know how you operate from an operation standpoint with a police budget that's over your general fund.
Well, as I said, that's pretty, that's pretty common.
But those other municipalities, are they offsetting with other income streams?
They're offsetting it with all the other income streams that I just mentioned.
Setting us up to go down a road that none of us want to go down.
Well, then you have to go down a lack, lack of staffing and a, and a reduction in public safety.
I think the board at this point is probably more comfortable with that than going down a road that we don't really want to go down. That, that's the gist of what I got from.
Well, that's.
If I may, when I go through the budget, I always look at line items to get, you know, oh, can you hear me? So there's a significant increase this year over the 2024 budget, over the 2023 projected in things like diesel and gasoline fuel. I don't know if that's, it's $19,000. That's almost the, the cost of this new officer for the, in the fourth quarter, right?
Yeah.
And there, there's some other items that might be a five or $10,000 jump from last year. That when we're talking about staffing and how to pay for that, that, you know, five, 10, $20,000 increases in budget and certain line items become significant.
Sure.
Only because they're affecting whether or not we can get an individual on staff.
Understand.
So what, what I, and, and I know there's probably some other items here, but those are just a couple that I saw. So what, what goes into, you know, why do we have a nearly basically a $20,000 increase in fuel? If we have the same number of vehicles and gas prices are essentially down this year?
That's what we do is we generally go by an average of the gallons of gas used per year over, over the years. And then we get a, a number from the road department as to what the fuel is going to come in at. And we try to budget that. Now that may be too high. It might be a little, could be a little lower. I don't really know, but I don't want to lie to a board and say, we're going to come in at $10,000 with our fuel and then come in it.
Yeah.
So I want to be respectful to the board. I want to give you as accurate or as close numbers that I think they're going to fall. They fall under that grade.
Yeah. Now, as this trip is, so I'm just looking, I'll stick with this one just because it's there. It's twofold, right? Gas prices and what, what miles per gallon is you get for that vehicle. A few years back, we entered into that new lease agreement, which
reduced mechanical costs and all that stuff. Yeah. So there's, there's less in that budget. Yeah.
Are we able to look at the vehicle? I don't think we vote every year in terms of what vehicles are being replaced and what type. Are we able to look at potentially more fuel efficient vehicles like cars versus SUVs or something like that?
Yeah.
See where we might be able to get some savings back?
Yeah. Well, it's possibility that there might be a little bit less fuel used in SUVs. But if you look around in all the departments in the state and Bucks County and probably the nation, everybody's going away from sedans because the SUVs are more, are safer. They last longer. They're better in snow conditions. And they're fit more equipment and the equipment that the police officers have to carry now are, are ridiculous. Between the computers, between the, the weapons. Don't forget they transport prisoners. So there's a cage. So it's very tight in the backseat for transport. If you had to get into a vehicle, not being a prisoner, be very tight for you in a sedan.
Yeah.
So the movement is away from sedans. And there's a minimal difference as far as cost, especially when you're leasing vehicles.
Dan, while you're on this thread, I, I do recall that 25,000, but I am not seeing it is individually as aligned at him. So.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, we should find out.
The license.
Yeah.
Here. I'm just curious as to where it falls.
That's in capital.
It's in cap.
That's in capital.
Okay. But I, point being, we're trying to get there by, by doing the math and seeing where there may be other savings. If there are things, it, if I could put a little bit of it back on you to work as a team here. If there are, if you can look at the budget for the police budget and see where you may be able to get some savings to make it a little easier for us to be able to do to.
I am, I, I don't know in my narrative, the exact percentage, but we talk about flexible and non-flexible issues in a budget. And I think we're just about over a percent and a half of non-flexible. So as I said, there's not a whole lot to cut, but I could certainly look at that because you know, having a, having a police officer and having an extra body when there's an emergency, you can't put a price on that. And you know, you could do away with a piece of equipment or you can do away with some nicety in a budget, which there's not that many of. But when it comes to a body, you don't mess with things like that because that's life or death on a situation. And, and I have to fight wholeheartedly for that. And I fought over the years and I was patient when regency started and asked for more officers. When I testified about the hospital, I testified as how many more officers we would need if that hospital was built. I never came back to the board and said I needed six more officers because Wegmans is coming in. Because it's common sense. You know, we need, we're, we need more officers. You know, we're getting populations, not only from Lower Makefield, but from everywhere coming into that location. You know, just with the traffic alone, not even with criminal offenses or safety issues, other than traffic is going to cause us a nightmare. And you know, everything we do outside of our responsibilities for any private company is reimbursed. So we do a good job at getting grants. We do a good job at reimbursement. I could probably, I don't have it in front of me, but I could probably tell you about close to $2 million in grants over my 23 years here. So, you know, it, to short, to short a, a, a police department like that and the residents like that, I think is just, is just wrong because it's not going to do a thing for your budget. It's not going to help your budget. Especially when you're coming in 2025, which is going to be major issues.
So I'm not sure if there's a, a new amendment on the.
There was a, an emotion, there was a proposal to shift LPR funding to replace the officer. Uh, I had not formally accepted that as an amendment. If I accept it, that means it's done as part of the motion. And I am still, I, I know that that number is there and I'm just looking if, if Allison or Mr. Kratz or anyone has the, the exact account. Yeah, we're, which, which.
That's, it's in capital, right, Dave? The, the LPR.
That would be.
Yeah, it's, it's in capital. Yep.
So that wouldn't get us an operating solution there. Do we want?
It's on page 58 of the draft, um, under the capital reserve fund. Listed under 480 miscellaneous expenditures for police.
Thank you. And that, so since it is in the capital reserve fund, you know, quote unquote, saving that 25,000 does not have an impact on the general fund?
Yeah, there's no, there's no out transfer, uh, current, currently being shown to, from the, um, from, from the general fund of the capital reserve fund. So, um, it would not, it would not reduce the general fund, uh, expense. If that transition was, was made.
Okay. And again, you're talking about a one-time fixed, one-time fixed fee versus a recurring expenditure.
Yeah, I, I think you and I have a, a general disagreement on the matter of whether or not that, that officer should be replaced. I, I certainly think it should, right? I'm trying to help the, the chief get the.
I don't think, I don't, it's not whether he should be replaced or not. We can't afford it. We just don't have the money.
Well, when you talk about hiring a finance director that was not here under three managers, two managers before our present manager. And I understand that it's a great position and I would like to see a finance director. But if you're saying you don't have the money in the finances for that, but yet you, you know, or you don't have the finances for a police officer at safety, but you have a salary that's going to be in excess of 170,000 to get a decent finance manager plus benefits. I think, I think you do have it.
Well, no, I think that the reason that we're here is because of that, the lack of having one.
I don't think so because the, a finance director isn't going to magically create revenue.
No, I think a finance director is going to manage our finances better than we have been.
I don't think our finances were managed poorly. I don't think you, the board managed our finances.
When you were talking earlier about the Tahoe, Tahoe, the SUV, is it, are you saying that the future of policing is that all vehicles will be SUVs?
I, I would think that most vehicles would be SUVs. Yeah. Only because of the main reason would be the safety and the equipment that's required. It's mandatory for officers to carry.
I, I, I don't think this is something you could add to today, but maybe in the future we could have a discussion about it. Cause like I hadn't thought about that, right? And so, and I should know, but I don't know, but let's pretend we have 20 vehicles. If we're shifting from, you know, a mixture of Sid, mostly sedans to now mostly SUVs, I don't, I don't know what the impact of that to us, to your, to your budget will be in the future. I think you make a good point about the equipment that most officers are carrying and stuff, but I just think that's something else the board has to think about. And when I say the board, I mean the residents about how we're going to um, make these decisions and fund them. So I'm going to ask everyone to halt for a second because it sounds like we have public comment coming in the back. Is that what that is? Or are you just, yeah, we have a public comment? Not sure what one five means.
Uh, we're bringing them in now.
Thank you. Can you state your full name and whether or not you're a resident of Lower Makefield, please?
Hi, this is Lori Gray. Um, I'm a Lower Makefield Township resident.
Hi Lori.
Hi. Um, sorry I couldn't be there in person, um, this evening as I was for the other budget meetings and um, most of the board supervisors meetings. Just a quick question as we're talking about um, the police officer and whether or not to put that into this year's budget or next year's budget. Um, quick question, because I don't have all the paperwork in front of me and I, I don't know all of the answers to these questions, but where is community day? Is that in the general fund?
It's in Park and Rec.
No, it's, Lori, it's in the Park and Rec operating account.
But if you wait for another amendment, it's going to be, I'm going to be making an amendment to take it out. So hold Lori.
No, I was just, I wasn't sure what's in the general fund and what's not in the general fund. I, I just don't have all that detailed information in front of me. So.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I apologize. But generally speaking, Parks and Rec is one of those departments that's allowed to have its own tax levy. So most of what, um, happens out of that department would be within the Park and Rec millage and therefore, um, in that department's budget. The other departments currently, Public Works, um, Township Staff, Police, they all come out from the general mill of 14, a little under 14.
Okay. Thank you. I'm learning. I'm learning. Uh, it, it with each, with each meeting, I learn more and more. So I appreciate that.
It's a journey and we're happy you're on it with us.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay. So can you put your mic on, please?
I apologize. I was going to say at this time, we have a, uh, an amendment to the motion, which I think Colin. I think given that it's, I'm going to withdraw the friendly amendment, given that it will not actually work towards helping ease the issue. So Madam Chair, just as a, before I know you have a friendly amendment, we are at a general millage of 13.88 mils and a resolution on new hires. And that's all we have that's different from the current one.
If no one else wants to make it, I'd like to make another friendly amendment, um, to eliminate the funding from community day from the budget. And I'll, I'll talk a little bit about it. Why? I, I mean, people who know me know I love fireworks. I don't think anyone loves fireworks more than me. But it's, it's almost $50,000. And Monica does a great job. And I'm not saying that $50,000 is going to solve our structural deficit because it won't. But in this time period where we're making really difficult decisions up here, I, I don't know how I could say yay fireworks. So um, I would ask for a friendly amendment to eliminate the funding for community day.
I'm, I'm okay with that.
Colin, say yes.
Yes.
A friendly amendment to eliminate the funding for community day.
Yeah, yes. No. Yeah. Supportive.
Okay. Thank you. Any comment from the board? Yes, Dan.
I, I think generally, you know, community day, community pride day, whatever we're calling it. Um, the concept is very positive and important. I hope that we can revisit it in future years, I, which I think we're all considering. I just want to say out loud. And revisit it in a manner that maybe it's, it evolves, it's reinvented to something that isn't as costly to the township. Um, still provides a great uh, benefit to the township and we can look to see how we do it better in the future, uh, fireworks or no. Definitely fireworks. But no, just so that we can kind of, again, hitting the, hitting the brake a little bit. So that we can kind of rethink things for the future and see what, see what we can do better.
Any other board members?
I was just going to eliminate the fireworks, but when Supervisor Blondie said, no, I like the fireworks. So then we agreed. That's it. Um, and it's just, it's something we enjoy doing. We want, and it's important for the community, but we have to balance it. And I hope in a year or two, we'll be back with a great program that will be different and effective. With fireworks. Or not.
Any public comment? Okay. Are there any other, uh, friendly amendments from the board?
I don't know if this is budget specific. Um, we talked in the back about, um, doing a kind of a, a board approval for expenditures during 2024 because of how lean everything is. Is that something that everybody would be interested in? During our normal meetings, actually reviewing expenditures, not ones that are approved, that are approved in a budget, but actually reviewing them prior to them being executed by, you know, whatever department throughout the year.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, we have no issue with that.
I don't know if that's part of the budget or is that's.
It, it's certainly not right now, but yes, let's do, let's make a motion after we get done with the budget part. Cause I think that's important. Anybody else? Yes, go ahead, Dan.
Listen, more of a question that could turn into an amendment. Because there's been some, you know, that with, with all the leaf pickup that's going on right now. You know, it, it takes a lot of resources from Public Works over the course of a month or two to basically, from what I understand, constantly focus on just leaf pickup. And processing and everything disposal and everything that goes along with the leaf program. To the point that our public work staff, that seems to be their major driver for this time of year. When we look at the leave fee and we look at the service provided, is it, in your opinion, is it adequate? Does it need to be increased? Do we need to change things? What, would you have a recommendation on?
When, when you say increased, you're, you're talking about frequency of collection increase?
No, no, I'm sorry. This is budget here. So.
Yeah, yeah. So the, so the fee is proposed to be increased, uh, from 70 to, to $90 annually. Uh, again, it has not been increased for a number of years. Uh, if you were, oddly enough, we just went through an exercise and took the current fee and applied just inflation over that period of time since the last increase and it's about $90. So it equates to, uh, actually what the cost of collection is during that period of time. So we are proposing to increase that fee from 70 to $90 annually as part of this. And that's necessary in order to just cover, cover costs associated with it. So that's, it provided a, Derek provided a spreadsheet showing expenses currently captured by, uh, the fee. And then there were things, um, that were not currently being captured, uh, cost of fuel, wear and tear on equipment. And a host, host of other items. So.
So it might understand that the increase to $90 would, doesn't really. So it might understand that the increase to ninety dollars would, doesn't really cover the cost of the program when you consider other items.
It does, it does, yeah. Ninety, ninety dollars gets us there, yep, yeah.
One option, and the leaf, does that go flow through the general fund then?
That flows through the general fund, that is correct.
If we think that the leaf program has been subsidized by the general fund, we could increase the leaf fee by five bucks. What does that do to the general, what does that do to revenue collection?
So that would be about, so there's currently about ninety-two, a hundred homes that are, or properties that are assessed currently. So an additional five dollars would be about forty-six thousand dollars.
So you're saying instead of seventy, ninety-five?
He's saying instead of ninety, go to ninety-five to, to pay back the subsidy that occurred during the period of time where the fee was not sufficient to cover costs. I, I, it's tough to, I mean.
This could be a one-time circumstance where we're correcting prior, and we haven't done a real. So for those wondering, when you think of the leaf collection program, by the way, the guys did an amazing job. They came through my neighborhood this week, they were on, ahead of schedule and the work has been off the charts great. I'm saying that because I did my raking over the weekend, so I was ready. But we haven't done a cost analysis of all the true expense involved in the leaf collection fee. I'm a supporter of the program, and it's only in recent years I've really received any benefit from it. But in general, it's been a winning program for its recycling value and stuff. We just need to make sure that the cost and the fees match up. And if we think that we've been under for a while, we over collect a little this year. And we'll, you know, given where inflation is, we'll be fine next year. That would give us additional general fund money.
I mean, Derek, just on his spreadsheet showed currently, based on costs of the program. And a net loss under the current seventy dollar assessment of about a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars.
Okay, so that.
That, that's what's necessitating the twenty dollar increase roughly.
Right, so if we make it twenty-five dollars, right, that gives us a little extra. Is that, I don't wanna.
That's, that's completely within your discretion to do that, if that's.
Well, I, I do appreciate Derek putting together that spreadsheet. And I, I think it's important, like, to really think about what is the cost of something. But I think what can't be put on that spreadsheet, and, and I didn't realize it until he sent me the email that I was asking him all those questions about. Pretty much all work stops in Public Works for the two months that we're collecting leaves.
Correct.
That, I mean, forget about the fact that we're one of the only towns that collect leaves. But if you think about the fact that for those two months, they're not filling potholes, they're not doing the maintenance. We, we got two emails recently about people had concerns that signs were precarious and might, you know, fall over and hurt somebody. Pretty much all that work has to stop for this. So if, if we were really to do a true accounting, we would think about, and I'm not saying we would do this, but we would think about the hiring of temporary staff to fill the role of Public Works while they're out doing leaf collection. And I appreciate the twenty dollars, the first time it's been increased since two thousand seventeen. And we all know there's all sorts of inflation, but to John's point, is that enough?
Yeah. And as you know, there, there is supplemental labor that's brought in to assist with, with leaf collection already. So and despite the supplemental labor that's brought in, that's still requiring the use of, of our internal labor force during that two-month period.
Because I suggested it, I'm half of the motion at ninety, I haven't heard anybody saying no to ninety-five, right? Colin, it's up to you now, if you're up for ninety-five dollar leaf collection fee.
I, I didn't have deciduous trees.
Colin has no trees on his property.
For the five years that I lived in my home, I had to plant them myself. But yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm supportive. I, I think in general, we're in bad financial shape, so an extra five dollars towards leaf collection, let's do it.
Well, I'm. I had to correct something, really important. We're the second most affluent municipality in Bucks County, one of the most affluent municipalities in the state of Pennsylvania or in the country. The financial challenges we have are somewhat structural based on state law and, and, and past decisions, right? Those are the two reasons that we're dealing with this now. And so we're getting ourselves out of that fix half or most of the way now. Over time, we'll probably get the rest of the way hopefully soon. We were diverted for a while on some stuff and now hopefully we can get that going.
So. I also further understand that because the staff is occupied, we have to rely more on contract services, et cetera, our costs do increase. So I will support your friendly amendment to change the leaf program fee from ninety dollars to ninety-five dollars.
So that's accepted.
That's accepted, so we have four now. I can recap them if you'd like, Madam Chair.
I want to see if there's any public comment on leaves. Excellent.
I just had a question. Were they native or non-native trees?
Gonna charge extra.
They are red blaze maples, the EAC is welcome to. Let me know if that was a good choice.
Yeah. I want you to know, I, I pulled two non-native trees this year, so, so much for my dwarf ornamental Japanese maple. Apparently is invasive, so you say.
Try and get one to grow, they're nearly impossible.
It was doing beautifully, it was the star of the neighborhood. Okay, anything else, folks?
Could I ask the board to consider another potential amendment? Looking over the budget for next year and the actuals from this year, most of the emergency costs for Maplevale were incurred under Public Works, something like five hundred thousand dollars or so above what was budgeted. Though we have increased that particular account, I worry that it's not enough. That what we've done with the two mills for the road program is really just to cover what we were already planning to do for roads. I would like to propose increasing that from two mills upwards. And I want to talk about how much to make sure that we are covering stormwater management costs. We know that we're not anywhere near done, the repairs and changes we need to with Maplevale. And I don't want to structurally underfund that, including the other parts of the township.
I respond with it?
Please.
So, couple things, let me get close to the mic, something, you know that. I think first foremost, I, I think a lot of that, Mr. Kratzer could do some accounting for us here. In terms of the, the dollar, let's say five hundred thousand overall on Maplevale related items, plus or minus, right? Think a lot of that was probably done within the PennDOT right away. On property owned by PennDOT or, or other state entities that we did on their behalf. Is that a fair statement? Not everything, but some.
Yeah, I mean, there definitely was a portion of the work that was, was done. And, and again, we were waiting for those bills to sort of come in in their entirety. And then we were intending to have a conversation with the Commonwealth about that work that was, that was done. Obviously, we can't count on the Commonwealth providing any reimbursement of those expenses.
Right, so, so low hanging, my perspective, low hanging fruit first approach, see what we can, what reimbursements we can get from work that we did when maybe others should have been doing it. We did it because it was important to get it done quickly, because our residents needed it, first and foremost. Secondly, I think we should be, again, Mr. Kratzer, we did apply for grant for some of the work that was planned anyway, it's been since re-envisioned a little bit or tweaked the exact scope. But we're still waiting on the award of a grant.
Potential award of a grant, that is, that is correct, yeah, yeah.
What we're now, used to be called Maplevale Phase Two, which for those of you that were at the open house last week, whatever it was, is now called the Highland Drive work. So we're, we're waiting on ramp, grants for that, so those, so that's gonna do that. Thirdly, we are also contemplating sometime in twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, to institute a stormwater fee that would be similar in effect to this, this millage. But would not be a millage, obviously, it would be a fee that's inequitable fee based on impervious surface. Generally speaking, as we're contemplating it, as most other, other townships in the Commonwealth and around the country that have similar fees do that, so that they can do storm, stormwater related infrastructure projects. Because they are fundamentally important and we don't want it to be based on a millage per se going forward. So I think, I think to do the, what we're calling the Maplevale project, but to do future stormwater infrastructure projects, really what we're talking about. Personally, I, I want to make sure, rather than always being focused on a road millage, I'm not, I'm not opposed to raising it. I just think it's more equitable in the long term if we focus more on the fee structure versus, versus a millage. That, that's, that's my two cents. And what the breakdown is now versus later, that's for discussion. But I just wanted to make sure that, that's out there.
Going, going back to your point earlier tonight about how we've underfunded these things, we were behind on these things, we need to catch up on these things. I certainly appreciate an equitable approach around, you know, if you've got a bigger patio and you've got a swing pole and all these things, you should have to carry more of the weight. However, the low-lying parts of the township are at critical arterials and critical infrastructure that affect all residents. Which is why I'm comfortable seeing it as a millage that the entire town contributes to. And while, so the, the total was, I think, four hundred and seventy-three thousand over budget, I think is where it ended up being for, for Maplevale. Not necessarily for Maplevale, in that account on Public Works, right? That account, the actual projected twenty twenty-three is four hundred and seventy-three thousand over the budget request. Or the approved budgetary amount for twenty twenty-two, or twenty twenty-three, apologies. We are funding it more in twenty twenty-four, we're taking it from two sixteen to two sixty-one. But an additional forty-five thousand dollars doesn't feel like much of a, we're behind and catch up, so.
So Colin, you like, intentionally triggered me with the word equitable. I, I worry.
I believe I was using Mr. Grenier's, Grenier's term.
I worry about equity, right? And when I go back to my college course about trying to create my own, my own government, what would equity look like in terms of taxing people? You know, I understand that when you say earned income tax, generally speaking, when anyone says that phrase, it, it has a visceral reaction. But equally, we have a lot of people in the county, in the township who are on fixed income. And you can think about that however you want. And I worry that we're gonna be through taxes and only looking at taxes associated with property that we are unintentionally putting the squeeze on them. And so I, I'm not, I don't love this budget to begin with, but I'm trying to be a team player and, and come to compromise. And when I, and when I think about just, you know, adding more and more and more, it, it feels like let's take that break and hopefully have more robust conversations in the next forty-one days and thereafter. Come to a, a better solution.
I mean, just, just to provide some additional information and perspective, so as, as Dan had mentioned, there's, there's a number of projects using twenty sixteen bond proceeds that have pending applications. Again, will we get all of those applications funded? I, I would argue probably not, right? But there's in excess of one point one million dollars of outstanding applications that, that have been submitted for good projects. Again, the merits of those projects is evaluated against the merits of projects all throughout the Commonwealth. And there's also political realities in terms of the distribution of those, those, those funds. So is it likely that we will hopefully get something and then have the ability to reallocate some of those funds? That, that remains to be seen and that could be a point of discussion in the future as, as those decisions are made.
Given that I don't feel there's a great temperature for accepting, so I will not make a, a formal motion here, because I don't think it's gonna get by. But I, I do wanna, Madam Chair, to address your concerns about equitability and tax, I'll tell you, when I, you know, when I sat in this interview and I, and I said I would do this, I. One of the reasons I moved to Lower Makefield when I moved back to the area over Newtown Township was that there was no EIT. I will say, I really hope that the township can have forums and conversations around the fundamental tax structure of the township throughout the course of the next year. I do think that we are at a juncture where a fundamental discussion about how we tax in this township is necessary, so.
Yeah, one of the, I'm sorry, one, one of the items that we did not mention, that, that, I know this conversation keeps on going back and forth and people are saying, well, what about this? What about this? What about this? I, I do want the public also to know that there is some contemplation of development of a strategy over the course of, of, of twenty twenty-four. So the twenty twenty-four does allocate some funds, which would be partially Commonwealth funded if works, if, if our application is successful to participate in what's known as the D.C., Pennsylvania Department of Community Economic Development's Strategic Management Planning Program. And so these issues regarding tax structure, regarding operational efficiencies, regarding all of those types of things that are the basis of the conversations that are occurring is part of the program. So, so one of the elements that is contemplated in twenty twenty-four is to participate in that program. So we can look at all of these issues, whether it's public safety staffing, whether it's tax structure, whether it's, you know, structure within, you know, within the Finance Department, within this department, within that department. Based on best practice, not based on just what has occurred here, but based on best practice across the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and across the nation. There is, there is funds set aside for that kind of dialogue and that kind of conversation. And I think, and I'm hopeful, that to the extent that we engage in that kind of conversation, all of these questions will be more easily answered and understood as you're, as you're forced to make difficult decisions moving forward. So I, I know there's a lot of back and forth, I do just want to point out that there's, there is some strategy built in or there's some funding built in to develop strategy in twenty twenty-four, that this is not a conversation that's occurring in a vacuum. It's a conversation that's occurring comprehensively, holistically and based on best practice.
And I appreciate that you had brought that to our attention. I hope we get selected, because I understand, like, it's closed for now and they'll open it up. And hopefully, we will be the beneficiary of that review.
Yeah, because we, I mean, as, as mentioned by everybody, you're, you're in some, you're, you're sort of a unique situation. There, there is general affluence in this community, not to suggest that everybody is, is of a certain stature. But you, you talked about, you know, the lack of reassessment over a fifty-year period is creating some of this. The, you know, the, the realities of statute are creating some of this. It's not, this isn't the five of you creating this situation or trying to deal with the situation. This is, this is built upon, you know, past decision-making based on statutory constraints and all of that. So it's not an easy circumstance that you find yourself in. But there are some unique circumstances here in Lower Makefield and particularly in Bucks County that are creating the realities that you're now facing.
And I will surrender my microphone in a moment, but I've heard general affluence mentioned a couple times. It is important to point out that I grew up in this township on food stamps and state housing assistance, right? So there are people in this township that to look at them, to look at their home, to look at their conditions, you wouldn't think are struggling. It's not just people on fixed incomes, and I am very aware of that as, you know, I know I'm temporarily in the seat, but I'm very aware of the impact it would have had on my own family growing up here to raise taxes. You know, ultimately, though, we have to look at the good of the township as a whole.
Along the lines of generational equity and, and, and because I'm, I'm going to be reaching the age where I'll be on a fixed income not that long from now, because I'm getting older. Different levels of government subsidize different generations. The federal government skews a lot of the benefits toward older people. States and localities tend to serve younger folks. And that's a function of local governments, or I would say, state and local entities do public schooling, right? That's a large portion of your taxes, we're only talking about ten percent of your taxes, or nine or ten percent of your taxes at most. So it's sort of like, on the one hand, yes, we are probably maybe assisting younger working families at the expense of older people. Other forms of government flip that, right? So it's, you kind of have to look at that holistically. And the state does have programs for people that have issues, who can't afford their property taxes, we have rebate programs. They are getting funded, Governor Shapiro increased the funding this year for that program. But yes, it's, these are the trade-offs we make, and they're, they're not easy or, or, or fun.
Are there any other amendments from the board? Not friendly amendments? Dan, Dan's got some. Uh, Dan, Dan's got something.
No, no, this is more of a question. Um, when we look for, for Mr. Kratz or what, you know, we have. I'm looking at our Schedule E here, our Township Capital L A schedule, um, from, from your email, not, not in the budget package per se. Um, where we have the table of projects that are. I don't think there's any, they're either paid for by the twenty six sixteen bond proceeds. Where the park and rec and Lou fee, uh, fee and Lou, sorry, um. I'm what, this is me just thinking out loud. There's a few of them here when I look at them. Do, do we really need that? And but the, you know, what's the alternative to, you know, do we need a shade structured rubber surface? Versus some infrastructure project that's, that we're not having on the list that might have a, a, a greater net benefit. So I, when, when we look, and there's probably some others in here too. I don't mean to pick on that one. But when we, when we look at this list, are there other projects from other departments? Um, that could be, that are eligible for, that's, that's a key point too, that are eligible to be paid by, through the bond proceeds. That we, that we might want to replace some of these that may not be as, uh, immediately necessary.
Anything that comes to mind in terms of capital projects that, uh?
Well, I guess another way is if we come up with something, if, if, you know, is this Schedule E flexible or is it cemented?
Yeah, I mean, fir- first of all, as I, you know, this is, th- this is a budget. It's, it's not, I mean, it's, it's somewhat rigid, but not entirely rigid, right? And so all of these projects from a capital perspective are projects that are going to come back before this board, uh, for conversation prior to the release of anything from, from a bidding standpoint. So we're not, I, I mean, I'll just sit here and speak for myself on behalf of all of us. I, I'm not going to just simply, if somebody comes to me and says, well, it's on a list, well, let's advance it. That's not my intention is to just advance it. My intention is to engage the board in that conversation. Based on the realities of those circumstances at that time, to make a decision as to whether this is something that, that wants to be pursued. I mean, the one that you reference, you know, the shade structures, I, I would say that's in addition to that park. The rubberized surface is an existing asset that, that is in need of replacement. Does it need to be replaced in twenty twenty four? I, I think you can maybe make an argument that perhaps it could be deferred, but it's, it's not. It's not an expansion project by any stretch of the imagination. The only one that I would characterize as a true sort of expansion that doesn't relate to a cap, capital maintenance is the expansion of Memorial Park. Which, uh, again, um, is being supported by, um, a nine hundred thousand dollar grant from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. There is a gap there. It's not an insignificant gap. It's three hundred and ten thousand dollars. But there is a timeframe as to whether the township wants to take advantage of that funding or not, and that's a decision for you to make.
So nine hundred is a total project with three hundred, an additional.
Yeah, nine hundred thousand dollar grant already awarded.
It's a one point two million.
One, one point two, yeah, yeah, million dollar project.
Seventy five percent funded by grant.
Correct.
What's the timeline on that?
So the, um, deadline for that is not until twenty twenty six, I believe.
June of twenty six is what we talked about.
I think June thirtieth of twenty.
Completed by twenty six.
So again, that, that, you know, that hasn't truly been engineered. It's more conceptual in nature. So there would have to be, you know, design work associated with that, but, um, but there's some time there to, to be able to make that decision.
Uh, and I guess, so there's the potential to postpone, delay, whatever, if, if necessary. Doesn't, but it's still based on bond funds, not new millage. Um, and that, I don't want to put words in your mouth there, but if, for example, land studies comes up with some projects that are, look like could be fundamentally. Improved that could fundamentally improve things based on their studies that are some value similar to one of these, is it possible?
I'm going to bring them back to you and I'm going to say, here's, here's an opportunity to advance this, this, this infrastructure project.
Above one of these and.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Swap out.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that's clear.
Correct. Yeah, yeah, that's, that's, uh, yep. And we, you know, as you know, we are pursuing, um, I mean, we've, we just, just this last week, we, uh, we met with Pima talking about, um. Uh, their brick program, which is sort of enhancing community resiliency as it relates to, um, uh, stormwater issues, flood issues and so forth. So, uh, between that and the ongoing work that land studies is doing, um, it's, it's likely that an opportunity will, will present that, that relates to a recommendation coming out of that. And we understand that that's a priority.
And, and, and again, to be clear, these park and rec fee and Lou, this budget is not taking any money from the general fund into the parks and rec fund. So holding off on any of these projects does not make any impact. On this particular budget, right?
Correct.
They have impact in ten years on maintenance, et cetera, but.
Correct, correct, correct.
Dave, you mentioned Maple Vale, but you said it quickly, so ears perked up, but they couldn't quite hear what you said, so. When you were just talking about.
So there is, I mean, there is phase two of Maple Vale, which is an expanded project that Dan had mentioned called Highland Drive Drainage Improvement. That's currently proposed to be funded. That's estimated at another seven hundred thousand dollar investment in, in that area of the township. Uh, again, land studies is, is, is anticipating to be at your meeting on December the sixth. Uh, to, uh, present a final report, um, and it's likely there'll be additional recommendations coming out of, out of that. So that work is ongoing. It's a priority and we're, you know, committed to seeing that, seeing that through and addressing that issue.
And I would just remind.
We just don't have cost associated with a lot of that at this point because it's, it's still being evaluated.
The other thing that's not swappable is Patterson Farm.
Correct.
Yeah, hopefully that's true.
I mean, there, there's, I mean, again, just a couple of these projects, Charles Bainstream Bank Restoration, Hidden Oaks Basin retrofit, uh, uh, project. Um, Five Mile Woods, um, uh, porous pavement, all of those are pollution reduction plan, uh, projects. So, um, that's part of your, um, uh, your MPDS permit for discharge of stormwater and, and meeting your requirements under that permit. But those are also, you know, there's significant grant, uh, applications that are currently pending on those. So there may be some freeing up of money there as well. And then everything else is again, I, what I would characterize as capital maintenance, not capital expansion in any fashion.
Are there any other amendments? Any other public comment? Yeah, of course.
We also have one public comment online.
Okay, just say your name again. You're first.
The rain is started to twenty Meadow Drive. Um, so I heard. Um, like a forty five thousand dollar thing thrown out, but from Maple Vale earlier. And now you're saying seven hundred thousand dollars for the Highland Maple Vale Phase Two project. Um, and we have not even gotten, nope.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just wanted, so I think what the first figure was a grant application that's pending.
Was forty five K?
Hundred and forty seven thousand dollars. I don't know where forty, forty five came from.
He mumbles.
Uh, are you talking about the four hundred fifty K? I think that, that supervisor coil mentioned about already being spent on Maple Vale.
Yeah, it, it was such a small number, almost fell off my chair. Um, and I was like, wow, that's all you have budgeted for.
No, 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 no.
We're so in trouble. Okay, so.
So for, for phase two, that project has changed, so that has a.
Highland.
The Highland, yep. It's estimated at six hundred ninety seven thousand dollars. That's the estimated cost associated with the project. Fun, it's funded in, in this proposed budget.
Okay, and the land studies that we haven't gotten anything back for why we flooded and their recommendations is not funded?
There's, there's, and that was part of the discussion here about potentially reallocating dollars from some of these listed projects. To any proposed project that may come out of that, that study. The study has not been completed. It's, it's, it's going to be finalized here in two weeks, so.
And because it was my commentary, the thing started this, this trouble. I want to be clear.
Five K?
This, this, this budget, I may have mentioned forty five thousand, I was doing quick math on a thing. This budget does include more money in all of the budget areas that paid for the emergency response from Maple Vale and everything else, right? So as, as Mr. Kratz are specified, there is significant spending in this budget for stormwater remediation and Maple Vale.
My concern, two concerns. One is, um. I don't want to get rid of the police and the public works people and I'm not sure if I give a crap about the leaves, but I'm sure people do. Um. Spending seven hundred thousand or six hundred ninety seven thousand dollars on something that we don't even know yet, that the other. That Highland has nothing to do with our flooding potentially. Maybe it's coming from Giant's Food Market from the creeks up there that's flooding our neighborhood. I mean, we don't know what they're going to say in two weeks, so. I'm sorry to say that I'm concerned that you're, I don't want to not allocate the seven hundred thousand to the drains. I think that's a great thing, but. Go ahead, John. Is this a permanent thing? Like, I mean, if, if land study comes back and says, we flooded because Giant is pouring out water into the creeks.
Again, there, there's a budgetary number here. It's not, it's, it's not, there's been no bidding of that project. So let's just say hypothetically, in two weeks they come back and they say, here's the silver bullet, right? Here, here's, here's what you need to do to address this issue.
And it has nothing to do with those drains than you would.
I'm sure they would, I'm sure the board would, would, would reevaluate whether it makes sense to proceed with the Highland Drive project as contemplated. Or to essentially reallocate funds to address the issue that's noted as the priority.
Okay.
Want to speak for you, but is that?
And then the, then the other list of projects you have, which all sounded important to me, um. If Highland Drive is very important part of this repair and there's more things, then there's other. What you're saying is that there's potential to flip some of those projects.
Correct, correct.
That, that I was asking him the same thing, that, that, because it all comes out of the twenty sixteen bond proceeds, those, those projects that we were talking about. I know you can't see the table that I was looking at, but most of those come from the twenty six, are funded by the twenty sixteen bond proceeds. My, my question was essentially the same thing. You have the list of, I'll, I'll make up the number ten projects listed. If we vote on this budget the way it is now, what is there anything stopping us from when land studies comes back and, and tells us something? Or maybe something else comes up somewhere, somewhere else that says, no, sorry, you can't do that. Very important project that's been identified. You have to do these ten. No, we can actually switch those out if something else looks like it would be a higher priority with, within, within the funds that we have here.
Right, so again, when this is available for public inspection, you'll see, um, for example, there's. There has been some interaction between the township and the Federal Railroad Administration regarding rail crossings in the township. There's currently five hundred thousand dollars of those proceeds that Dan just referenced. That's allocated as a placeholder for those at this point, in, in the event that we're required to make those improvements. That, that's still being worked out, but it's just sort of a set aside. So again, if, if something happens where there's a project that's identified, it's a priority project, it relates to a critical infrastructure issue. My intention would be to bring, I mean, obviously it's going to be brought back to this board and we would discuss reallocation of those funds. From what is contemplated here to what, what presents itself, um, in reality, based on, based on the evaluation. Um, I mean, again, just to provide some context, while not specifically Mapleville centric only. There's, there's over two million dollars of capital stormwater related projects that's currently being shown on this list, so. Two million dollars is substantially more than what the township has historically spent on stormwater.
The, um, oh, go ahead, John.
I was going to say, and because I know this is of concern for you, that, that five hundred thousand dollars on the railroads, that's been three or four years. And it hasn't been worked through.
And it doesn't even sound like enough. I'm just telling you.
It doesn't what?
Doesn't sound like even close enough. I work for the transportation. It's not enough.
Yeah, we keep on, we're waiting for correspondence from the railroad administration and that we, they keep on waiting and they're saying, oh, well, the, the letter's pending, the letter's pending, and then we never get it, so.
Yeah, we've been at that, but for each one of these projects, we're going to be approving the design work, right? Then we would go and have a vote for, to go to bid. Then we would vote to accept the bids. So you've got a number of votes between when something gets placed on this budget and when it actually gets done. The price can, uh, sway significantly. There have been times, just so that you know, where the board has said, hey, we want to do this capital project. Um, we design it and it goes out to bid and then the bid's too high and we have voted no. At least I have on, on some of those. I took, uh, well, a severe thrashing on the dog park. I was a no on accepting those bids because it was a lot higher. And turned out to be even higher, right? So there's variability in all those steps. And so if, I, I know you're an effective advocate for the Maple Vale community and, and your, and your, and your neighbors. To, to be here during each of those steps to make sure, and we're going to be following that process, you know, throughout each stage.
I would, I would recommend that you do a design bill bid so that whatever you design that you actually are allocating at that same time. So you don't lose those several months for construction, but you know, it's my two cents. But to go back, um, during the flood that we did.
Favorite term. Don't worry. We got that.
Yeah.
Design.
Two, two years ago, we flooded. Obviously you know that. And I thought then we went out for money for a grant. Is that all that money spent, um, on Maple Vale? The one that, the money that we got from Maple Vale?
The, the money that was allocated in terms of the ARPA dollars, there's some, there's a small residual amount that'll go towards the Highland project, which was phase two of Maple Vale. Um, but do you, what's?
It's like two hundred sixty thousand. It wasn't a hell of a lot.
It's like two hundred and forty seven thousand or something, I think is two thirty seven and all of that money is, is dedicated for. Well, there's still a small residual, sixty, sixty five.
What hasn't been spent will be spent on Maple Vale or Highland, Maple Vale Highland.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And I believe there's someone on the line?
Yep, moving Lori into the room now.
Oh, she's back.
Hi, this is Lori, uh, Gray. Again, I am a Lower Mayfield Township resident. Um, first of all, I'm just, I'm glad to hear, um, that there was money allocated in the twenty twenty four budget to develop the strategy. For twenty twenty four and going forward. I believe that's what I heard from the township manager, so that, that, that was great news. Um, I think also, Dave, I think I heard you say, one of my questions was, um, when the public, um, is able to see all the documents. We will see, um, Schedule E, which has all the capital projects. Did I understand that correctly? That will be available for us to review?
That is correct. Yes, it's part, it's part of the, the document that'll be made available for public inspection, yes.
Okay, great. And I may know the answer to this, but I just want to get confirmation. When we talk about the capital projects, I understand that they're paid out of grants. And what is it? The twenty sixteen bond proceeds? Is that the funding for all of the, I mean, what is the capital projects? What is the total of the capital projects right now as it stands? I know I'll be able to see it in a few days or something, but.
Um, so we'll have to, uh, Allison will tabulate that, um, but just to answer your question about funding sources. So on the Schedule E, which is the capital projects listing, there's. In, including grants, uh, which is, there, there's notations on the sidebar about submitted grant applications. There's, other than grant, external funding, there's two primary funding sources, uh, that's being shown. The twenty sixteen bond proceeds, so the township had issued general obligation debt in twenty sixteen, uh, for a variety of purposes. Um, and so there's residual, uh, bond proceeds that, um, that, that can be spent and should be spent, uh, for capital purposes. In which the tax exempt debt was, was incurred. And then the second source, which is a, which is a more restricted source, is park and rec fee in lieu of. So when, uh, a developer develops and doesn't provide, um, public dedication of parkland, they pay a per unit fee. And so that money is able to be used for capital additions to the park system, maintenance to the, uh, park system and, and like expenses. But that's, that's more restrictive to, to, to parks in essence.
Okay, great. That, that's good. I wasn't, I wasn't aware of that. So in other words, if I understand correctly, really no tax dollars per se.
Correct.
Going on capital projects. Is that a fair understanding?
That is correct, yes.
Those, those capital projects.
Those capital projects that are listed, that is correct. And the total, uh, sum of the schedule is, um, four million, seven hundred and seventy five thousand and eight dollars is the current total of, of what's shown on the schedule.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And then, Mr. Kratz, or, sorry, related to those twenty sixteen bond proceeds, and I apologize if you mentioned this. I think it is important to point out that statutorily, we cannot continue to hold those funds. They have to be expended.
Correct. There, there's, you have, when you issue debt, there, there's a, uh. There, there's a reasonable expectation in terms of spending those, um, which we are currently beyond what is technically in the statute regarding tax exempt debt. Again, there was COVID, there was a host of other things. Projects take time, so it's not a hard and fast, but, um, they should be expended as quickly as possible.
Um, great, thank you. And, and I think I heard somebody say those capital projects. So there's other capital projects not on Schedule E or maybe I misunderstood.
There's nothing currently contemplated. I think what the chair was mentioning is if something, uh, were to materialize, like Lori had mentioned about, uh, um. Or there was just discussion about, um, other stormwater related stuff that may come out of the ongoing evaluation that land studies is doing. At, at that point, you know, there, we, we would have a discussion as to how they're being funded, whether it's reallocation of these monies or whether it's, um. Whether it's reallocation of these monies or whether it's potential use of other monies.
And our other capital expenditures, Lori, just, just to be hyper technical, but these are, let's say, bigger ticker, ticket items that are project in nature.
That, yeah, that's fair.
And there are like, for example, golf course, there's a golf course capital projects fund, right?
Right.
List. So there are capital projects occurring at the golf course, not part of the schedule.
That, that's, that's fair. Yep, that's correct.
Okay, okay. Thank, thank you. Thank you for that. And I, I do appreciate Chair Blondi's comments about, I am one of those senior citizens on a fixed income. So it's, I, I appreciate the, the comments that she made. I do have, which probably sounds like a silly question, but and, and I apologize if I, if I don't understand correctly, and I am trying to understand all of this. I think way very in the beginning, we said we were doing this leaf collection from 70 to 90, and maybe it's going to go to 95. It all depends on what it gets, what gets voted on. But is that, that comes out of our taxes? Is that where that gets paid out of? When you say 70 to 90 and where, where is that money right now coming from? My, our taxes that we pay?
So it's a separate assessment. It is on your tax bill though, correct? It's listed as an assessment on your tax bill. So it's a flat, it's, it's not. It's a fee in essence. It's not based on the assessed value of a property. It's just a flat fee for the service that's being provided.
Okay, okay. And, and why do we have leaf collection? I think, I think somebody mentioned we're one of the few few townships that even do leaf collection. And I, I know half the people in my neighborhood pay a, a separate contractor to take their leaves away. So they didn't even realize that the township does it. Shame on them, but what, why, why, why do we when we're talking about the financial situation that we're in?
There's a, there's a former supervisor who's sitting at home right now chuckling because when he suggested getting rid of it, the outcry, well, it still rings in some people's ears. I think that is something that we need to talk about. But generally speaking, there are people in the township who love the leaf program. Dramatically so.
I mean, to just give you, I mean, just a little humor on this, just to give you some perspective. So I, I worked with a public works director previously. We did not have curbside leaf collection. He had been with the municipality for 30 plus years. His ambition, his goal, because of the extent of effort from a time standpoint and from a financial cost standpoint was to retire prior to the municipality doing curbside leaf collection. So, so I know in my prior jurisdiction, the amount of money and time we spent on leaf collection, capital equipment related to leaf collection, all of that is, is extraordinary. So it is, it is a significant, significantly costly service from a cost and time standpoint.
And I think that's important. And, and I, I know through all of this, I know it was mentioned before, you know, four people are in the room, eight people are online. You know, it's, it's, it's my job and everyone else's job to get, make this residents in this township aware of what's going on. Because I think when push comes to shove, you know, I think if people really understood, they'd be saying, yeah, I can rake my own leaves. And I know we're only talking $95 here. That's not the point. It's, you know, it's one thing out of, out of, out of many, because as you said, it costs the township a lot of money to do that, that we could be spending money other ways. So okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood that. And I appreciate you guys taking the time, A, to go through this and B, even more so to explain it in greater detail to me. So thank you. I appreciate it.
And Lori, when you tell your friends and neighbors about the leaf program, please tell them to make sure that they rake the leaves onto the grass, not the street. Because when they go in the street and a storm comes along and ends up clogging up our storm drains and contributes to stormwater issues. Thank you.
We have one more public comment. Thank you, Lori.
Michael Brendan, Six Maplevale Drive. I will be very quick. First of all, for the 12 people listening, mowing your leaves is much healthier for your lawn than raking your leaves and waiting for leaf pickup. So if everyone did that, we could get rid of the program, no questions asked. Number two, and much more importantly, has there been any kind of off the record, informal feedback from land studies yet about any kind of projects, any kind of costs, anything, any communications at all?
I'm not inter, there, well, I, I, let me back up. So we did have a call. I mentioned we, we met with Pima. Land studies was part of that to talk about potential funding application, implement some of the improvements. Two of the, I guess, projects that they're looking at at this point is relate to the potential construction of basins on the two township owned parcels, both north and south of, of, of Maplevale. And so as part of that, we're going to be doing some infiltration testing, just doing some soil sampling there to try to evaluate the the infiltration capacity of those soils. So, so that's in part, some of the discussion. There's been some other sort of conceptual stuff, but in terms of concrete projects, those are two that, that are being discussed at this point.
At this point, we don't have any idea about costs of anything that they might propose.
No, it's all, it's all high levels, sort of conceptual at this point. Yes.
And the basins north and south of Maplevale, it'd be like where the pumping station is?
So.
One of the basins?
Would be the parcels south of Maple, Maplevale. So, so not south and then north as well. And obviously there would be infrastructure to direct flow there as well. So it's not just basins. We would have to figure out slopes and all of that stuff. So.
Okay. So where the, the new drain was put in?
On that, on that site and then on the site to the north of the neighborhood. Yep.
I could tell you a little bit about infiltration there, but that'll be for another day. Thank you.
Okay.
Closing public comment? With that, I'll call the question and the motion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, so if I could just make one, so a, as a result of the board adopting the preliminary budget and authorizing its availability for, for public inspection, we'll make the changes that were noted. I'm just going to go over those quickly if you would. So reduce the general purpose millage rate currently being shown in the draft from 14 mils to back to its current rate of 13.88 mils. There was a general, while it doesn't have an immediate effect on the, the budget per se, just sort of a commitment to revisit staffing based on sort of revenue and expense performance over the course of the year for any hires that are currently not allocated to within, within the budget.
The resolution was predominantly public works and restoration of the police officer.
Okay, yep, okay, yep. Eliminate funding for Community Day out of the park and rec operating account. And then increasing the leaf assessment to $95 as an annual leaf assessment. Is that, is that correct? Is that the items? Okay, so then we'll make those changes. We'll advertise the availability of this for, for public inspection, both through the newspapers, we're required to do, as well as online. And then the board, based on the required 20 day inspection period, we would place it on the board's agenda for December the 20th for, for final consideration and potential adoption. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay, sounds good.
So no extra meetings, just the two regular meetings?
Correct. It would just be the two, two meetings in December, based on the ability to get this done this evening. Yep.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.